I would like to welcome the audience to the April eighteenth, two thousand seventeen Parish Planning and Zoning Board Meeting. Would you all please stand as Coach Williams says the invocation and pledge of allegiance?
Dear God, again, we thank thee for allowing us to see another blessed day. Thank thee for life, for health, and strength. Most of all, we thank thee for your life, suffering and dying, shedding blood for the remission of our sin. We ask thee to forgive us our short comings and make us fit to serve. And we thank you for another opportunity to meet in this place to take care of the business which has been assigned to our hand. We pray for this board, we pray for this staff. We also ask special blessing of those who come seeking our help. Let the Holy Spirit guide us and lead us, and may good that which is right in your sight. This we offer this day as our prayer. Amen to Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible and just as one.
Ms. Christie, would you please call the roll?
Chair Jake Porche.
Here.
Vice Chair Art Little.
Here.
Mr. Randy Armentor.
Here.
Ms. Betty Brown.
Here.
Ms. Latricia Cov.
Here.
Ms. Julia Dickerson.
Here.
Ms. Sharon Galicia.
Here.
Mr. Kyle Link.
Here.
Mr. Gary Navarre.
Yeah.
Mr. Kirk Smith.
Here.
And Mr. LaSalle Williams.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Christie. This is an eleven-member board. It will take a majority of those members present to grant or deny any requests heard tonight. The chair will refrain from voting unless that time might affect the outcome. The meeting will be conducted with me reading the requests from the agenda. The planning staff will give a presentation and report their recommendations. If the applicant would like to add to the staff's presentation, or if someone from the audience has comments, please come to the microphone and state your name, address, and the nature of your request. All persons wishing to speak other than the applicants need to fill out a blue Request to Appear Form located in the back of the room. The form must be given to a staff member prior to the reading of the agenda item. As required by this board's bylaws, in all cases, the proponents will be limited to ten minutes. Opponents will be granted ten minutes as well, with each speaker allowed no more than three minutes. I recommend that a spokesperson be selected if there is a large group wanting to speak on the same agenda item. If four or more speaker request forms are submitted, the time allowed for individual speakers will be limited based upon the number of forms submitted. The chair has the right to limit speakers who present redundant information or personal attacks. In unique situations, the chair may extend, or the board may vote to extend, the time allotted for speakers. After discussion, the board will vote on each request. I will announce the decision of the board after the vote. Preliminary subdivision approval and zoning exceptions and variances are final tonight. The road abandonment and rezoning cases will go before the police jury for final action on April twentieth, two thousand seventeen, at six P.M. This meeting is being taped by the Calcasieu Parish Government Channel and can be viewed on Wednesday and Thursday following the meeting. For additional run dates, check the website at www.cppj.net. Channel five in Lake Charles, Sulphur, Moss Bluff, Westlake, Vinton, Dequincy, and Gillis. Channel ninety-nine in Carless and Grand Lake. At this time, I would ask you to please silence all of your electronic devices or any noise makers. Moving to item five on the agenda. Take appropriate action to approve the minutes of the February twenty-first, two thousand seventeen Planning and Zoning Meeting. I will entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Cobb. And a second by Ms. Brown. All in favor state aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Minutes are approved. Item six, take appropriate action on a request by Ronnie Roussel for preliminary subdivision approval to allow a single-family residential subdivision, three additional lots for a total of thirteen, and Wagner Place subdivision revised in the sixty-four hundred block of River Road and Ward Eight. I will entertain a motion for approval with the stipulation.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Navarre.
Second.
Second by Mr. Link. Ms. Wallace.
This property is located in LeBlu Settlement and encompasses sixty-one and a half acres of agricultural zone land. In two thousand fifteen, the developer divided the property into ten tracts under the minor subdivision procedure. At that time, I'm sorry, at this time, he would like to shift some of the lot lines and further subdivide some of the larger tracts, thereby creating three additional lots. The smallest of the new lots is just over two acres. Because the development is consistent with the character of the area, the staff recommends that the request be granted with the following stipulations: that the development is subject to an application for and/or compliance with an LPDES, stormwater discharge permit, which may be required through the Department of Environmental Quality or the Calcasieu Parish Division of Planning, and that prior to submission of engineering plans, the preliminary plat and the drainage impact analysis or appropriate waiver must be approved by the Division of Engineering.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. We do not have any opposition to this agenda item, but if the applicant would like to speak or add to the staff's presentation, you may do so. Okay? Any questions or comments by the board?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, you do have an email opposition? I assume that the gentleman was going to come tonight, but I suppose he didn't make it. But I did want to point out that he did.
I don't have any blue cards for that item. Okay? Any questions or comments by the board? If you didn't fill out a blue card at this time. If we do have an email in opposition, we can do a roll call vote.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Ms. Dickerson?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Cov?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Navarre?
Yes.
Ms. Galicia?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Link?
Yes.
Mr. Armentor?
Yes.
Ten far.
Item six passes. Item seven, take appropriate action on case VA zero four dash zero one nine dash one seven, a request by BN Inter vivos trust. I may be mispronouncing that. For variance to allow two nonconforming lots in the eleven hundred block of Straight Drive in Ward Four. I will entertain a motion for approval with the stipulation.
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Brown. And approval by Ms. Cobb. Ms. Wallace.
This property is located in the Moss Lake area and encompasses point nine nine acres of single-family residential zone land. The petitioners would like to subdivide the lot into two lots with both to be sold. Both proposed lots will have just under a half acre of land. One lot will have twenty feet of road frontage while the other will not have any road frontage. Access for that lot would be provided by a permanent easement. To be conforming, each lot would need to have one hundred feet of road frontage in a full acre of land. Because the proposed lots are consistent with the others in the area, the staff recommends that the request be granted with the stipulation that the lots be subdivided in accordance with the submitted survey dated May tenth, two thousand sixteen.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace.
Mr. Chairman, I will abstain from voting on this, this and the next one.
You were accused?
Yeah.
Mr. Gab, Mr. Navarre will recuse himself on this. We do not have any opposition to Agenda Item Seven, but if the applicant is present and you would like to speak or add to the staff's presentation. Okay? Any questions or comments by the board? On Item Seven? Right, seeing no opposition, all in favor state aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item Seven passes. Item eight, take appropriate action on case VA zero four dash zero two two dash one seven, a request by BN Inter vivos trust for a variance to allow an accessory building prior to the main dwelling in eleven hundred block of Straight Drive in Ward Four. I will entertain a motion for approval with the stipulations.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Cobb. And a second by Coach Williams. Ms. Wallace.
This is the same tract as in the previous agenda item. The purchaser of the northern lot, being subdivided, would like to construct an accessory building prior to constructing the main dwelling on the property. The accessory building would consist of a screened porch, a bathroom, and a sink. Because minimal impacts are to be expected, the staff recommends that the request be granted with the following stipulations: that the development adhere to the site plan on file with the division, provided that the director or designated may authorize adjustments to site plans in light of technical or engineering considerations, and that the main dwelling must be constructed within two years of zoning approval.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. Again, we do not have any opposition on Item Eight. If the applicant would like to speak, you may do so. If not, okay, thank you. Any questions or comments by the board? Seeing no opposition, all in favor state aye.
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 All opposed? Item Eight passes. Item Nine, take appropriate action on case VA zero one dash zero one eight dash one seven, a request by Ricky Manuel requesting a variance to decrease the front yard setback requirement for an accessory building. Requires sixty feet. He is requesting fifteen feet at fourteen twenty-five Park Road in Ward One. I will entertain a motion for approval with the stipulation.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Cobb.
Second.
Second by Ms. Brown. Ms. Wallace.
This property is located in the Moss Bluff area and encompasses just over half an acre of mixed residential zone land. The petitioner recently placed an RV cover on the property. Because the cover is only fifteen feet from the front property line, a variance on the sixty-foot setback is needed. Because the setback is not consistent with others in the area, the staff recommends that the request be denied. Should the board grant the request, the staff recommends the following stipulation: that the development adhere to the site plan on file, provided that the director may authorize adjustments to site plans.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. We do not have any. Mr. Navarre.
This cover was built with a permit?
No, sir.
Built without a permit.
It's my understanding that the owner wanted to get electrical service to the cover, and when he came in to get a permit for that is when we caught the issue.
So if we deny it, does he have to tear it down?
Yes. Or relocate it, put it that way.
All right. We do not have any opposition, but if the applicant is present and would like to add to the staff's presentation or say anything? Yes, sir, you may come.
I know there was a question about the permit issue.
State your name and address for the record.
Oh, Ricky Manuel, fourteen twenty-five Park Road, Lake Charles, right there in Moss Bluff. I wasn't aware for a temporary cover like this that I needed a permit. It's my own fault, but I wasn't aware I needed one. And then when I went to get the electrical services, when I went to get the permit. And it's just for my camper, it's nothing else.
Any other questions for the applicant?
You said it was a temporary building?
It's just a camper cover.
But it is a fixed permanent structure.
What's the size of it? Eighteen by thirty-two?
And it's set in concrete?
No, it's set on limestone.
Arena, you can see it in the picture right here.
There's a picture over there.
I'm sorry.
Nice. It's nice, yeah, it looks nice.
All right, any other questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir. May be seated. Any questions or comments by the board? Any discussion? All right. Seeing no opposition, all in favor state aye.
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 All opposed? Item Nine passes. Item Ten, take appropriate action on case VA zero one dash zero two one dash one seven, a request by Roussel Construction LLC for a variance to decrease the side yard and rear yard setback requirements. Side yard requires ten feet, he's requesting five feet. The rear yard requires fifteen feet, and he is requesting zero feet. At fifty-one sixty-nine Goss Ferry Road in Ward One, I will entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Navarre. And a second by Mr. Link. Ms. Wallace.
This property is located in the Old Town area and encompasses point zero eight acres of agricultural zone land. In two thousand fourteen, the petitioner requested a setback variance that was denied by the board. The denial was appealed to District Court where the appeal was rejected. At this time, the petitioner is requesting a similar variance, but he is proposing modifications to the structure to back it further from the property line than it was originally constructed at. Because the setbacks are consistent with others in the area, the staff recommends that the request be granted with the following stipulations: that the development adhere to the site plan on file, provided that the director may authorize adjustments, and that the petitioner obtain all necessary permits and complete all work within forty-five days of zoning approval.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. We do not have any cards in opposition, but if the applicant would like to speak. Yes, sir? Or a representative?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Tom Gale. Address is seven thirteen Kirby Street, Lake Charles. I'm here on behalf of the applicant Roussel Construction. This did come up before. Are there any questions for the board? Anything he may would like to know? Or I just ask him for the five-foot variance on the side?
If I'm not mistaken, he was supposed to dismantle part of this when we passed it, when we failed it two years ago.
That is correct, but when he appealed it, it allowed him more time. And when the final decision came through from fourteenth JDC, you know, things don't move quickly through the court system, and it was basically what-
What about the permit from the Corps of Engineers? Did he get a permit from the Corps of Engineers?
We don't have jurisdiction over that, Mr. Gale might have to-
Yes, he has a permit that's been submitted.
Pardon?
He does have a core permit, and it has been turned into the parish as evidence that it's happened. And there is a permit on the primary structure.
Any other questions? Mr. Little?
On the plot plan that's in our packet, it's showing a removal of a portion. Then there's another thirty or forty foot that appears to be still remaining on the neighbor's property. Does that not have to be moved five foot also?
Now, the property line issue is complicated, to say the least.
Okay.
It's my understanding, and Mr. Gale can probably elaborate on that, but it's my understanding that there's a number of different surveys that show different property lines. But what we advised the petitioner when he came in to file the application was that it was his responsibility to make sure that if our inspector went out there and measured from a property line, that it would be the five feet. So he is aware of the fact that it is his responsibility to comply with whatever you decide tonight, regardless of what any surveys might show.
Because I went out there. The stake is here, and he's three foot on the other side of the stake, not on his property. He's like eight foot out of compliance. The five foot he should be, and the three foot that he's over on his neighbor's property. He blocked his whole neighborhood's view of the river.
Well, if he's three foot onto the neighbor's property, he's thirteen feet out of compliance, right?
Whatever.
Eight feet out of what he's asking for.
Right.
Well, again, the property line issue is very complicated because one survey shows that he owns this, and one survey shows that the neighbor owns that, and we just have to basically go off of what's submitted and what we were to measure if we were going to go out there and do enforcement proceedings. But the applicant has assured me that by removing the portion that he's asking to remove, which is seven feet on your site plan, that it will bring him into compliance with a variance for five feet from the property line.
Also, I want to reiterate, he worked after a cease and desist was handed to him while building that. He finished electrical work, because I went out there.
So, but the side yard setback is ten feet? And he's asking for five?
Setback, yes.
What happened, Ms. Porche, this happens to be an ag zoning district. If it was an R-one, R-two, or mixed, it'd be fine.
Right, correct.
It's just because they anticipate-
R-one would be five foot.
Correct.
Any other questions? Mr. Armentor.
Okay, well, the property line dispute and all that, wouldn't that be, have to be dealt with in a different form from this?
Ms. Armentor?
The dispute, that's up to somebody else to decide where, you know, that's not even, shouldn't be talked, that's discussed here. We're saying the property line.
Right.
Which is not up to us, it's the side, what the property line is, or to say if we're right or wrong where it is. That's not our thing.
You're exactly right.
I mean, if you go out to the, on this road, probably half the houses are built within five foot. Everybody gives variances to build because the lots are so narrow. So he's not asking for anything that I can see that's not been asked for before. What went on before, I don't know, but I mean, I'm sure those matters have been rectified with staff or-
When you look at the map, it appears that there's numerous structures out of confirmation.
Well, I mean, a lot of people have come up here and got variances to be able to construct out there already. And for me, it would be hard for me to deny somebody that all he's wanting is something that everybody else is already getting.
Mr. Navarre?
His roof and his neighbor's roof, the lines are less than five foot apart. One roof here and one roof right here, they touch it almost. And whether he did it without a permit, everything he did was illegal two years ago, and I'm still against it.
Point of clarification, it was not all done illegally. The house, the primary structure that is there is fully permitted.
Yeah.
Remaining structure that is over the water-
Not the addition that he did, not the addition.
The remaining condition that's over the water is on the jurisdiction of the core, and he's got a core permit for that. So it's basically the hallway that we're asking that we allow the variance for so it can come into compliance.
Any other questions or comments?
So the site plan that's on file, all he's going to have to remove is just that one hashed out area? That area running further back, he doesn't have to remove any of that? That's what you're speaking of, belongs to the core, okay.
So he has the core approval?
Correct.
Any other questions for the applicant? Mr. Gale? Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Christie? Let's do a roll call vote.
Ms. Dickerson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
No.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Galicia?
Yes.
Ms. Cov?
Yes.
Mr. Navarre?
No.
Mr. Link?
Yes.
Mr. Armentor?
Yes.
Eight far, two against.
Item Ten passes. Item Eleven, take appropriate action on case VA zero seven dash zero one seven dash one seven, a request by Mary Diane Foreman Hudson for a variance to allow a nonconforming lot in the twenty-six hundred block of Foreman Road in Ward Seven. I will entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Cobb.
Second.
And a second by Mr. Link. Ms. Wallace.
This property is located in the Vinton area and encompasses point six six acres of light industrial zone land. Prior to two thousand eleven, this lot was part of a larger tract of family-owned land. The lot has a hundred feet of road frontage and twenty-nine thousand square feet of land. The petitioner would like to allow her nephew to place a manufactured home on the land, which requires that the lot meet residential standards of one hundred twenty-five feet of frontage in a full acre or forty-three thousand five hundred sixty square feet. In the next agenda item, the petitioner is also requesting an exception to allow the manufactured home in light industrial zoning. But because the lot is consistent with the others in the area, the staff recommends that this particular request be granted.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. We do not have any opposition to this agenda item, but if the applicant would like to speak or add to the staff's presentation, you may come to the podium at this time. Any questions or comments by the board? Seeing no opposition, all in favor state aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item Eleven passes. Item Twelve, take appropriate action on case EX zero seven dash zero zero nine dash one seven, a request by Mary Diane Foreman Hudson for an exception to allow residential development, manufactured home in the twenty-six hundred block of Foreman Road in Ward Seven. I will entertain a motion for approval with the stipulations.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Cobb. Second by Mr. Link. Ms. Wallace.
This is the same property considered in the previous request. If approved, a sixteen by ninety manufactured home would be placed on the lot, serving as the nephew's residence. Because there are other residential uses in the immediate area, the staff recommends that the request be granted with the following stipulations: that the development adhere to the site plan on file, and that the manufactured home be skirted prior to the utilities being connected.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. Once again, we do not have any opposition to Item Twelve, but if the applicant would like to speak, may come to the podium at this time. Any questions or comments by the board? Seeing no opposition, all in favor state aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item Twelve passes. Item Thirteen, take appropriate action on case RJ zero four dash zero two one dash one seven, a request by James LeBlanc to rezone from agricultural to manufactured home park to allow a manufactured home park, three spaces, at two ninety-eight Berkstrom Road in Ward Four. I will entertain a motion for approval with the stipulations.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Cobb. Second by Ms. Brown. Ms. Wallace.
This property is in the Carless area and encompasses one acre. The petitioner currently lives in the existing manufactured home on the property. He would like to place two additional manufactured homes on the lot to be used for rental purposes. Because there are similar developments in the area, the staff recommends that the request be granted with the following stipulations: that the development adhere to the site plan on file, that a drainage impact analysis will be required unless appropriate waiver is granted by the Division of Engineering, that all exterior lighting must be oriented inward toward the development to minimize intrusion onto surrounding properties, and that screening must be provided in accordance with Section twenty-six fifty of the Parish Code.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. We do not have any opposition to Item Thirteen. The applicant would like to add to the staff's presentation? May come to the podium? Right? Any questions or comments by the board?
If I'm not mistaken, I know he's asking for three, but I think one's in the existing, that he just wants to add two?
Yes, that is correct.
A total of three?
Yes.
Any other questions? Comments? All right. Seeing no opposition, all in favor state aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item Thirteen passes. Item fourteen, we do have three blue cards, but they're all proponents of the applicant. Take appropriate action on case RJ zero one dash zero two two dash one seven, a request by William McCain to rezone from mixed residential to light commercial to allow light commercial development, a fix-it shop in the nine hundred block of Park Road in Ward One. I will entertain a motion for approval with the stipulation.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Cobb.
Second.
And a second by Ms. Brown. Ms. Wallace.
This property is located in the Moss Bluff area and encompasses point five seven acres of land. If the request is approved, the petitioner will sell the land to John Gilmore. Mr. Gilmore has an established appliance repair business. He would like to construct a building here and relocate the business. The bulk of the repair work is done off-site, so the building would be used to store parts and as a base for the business's one outside employee. Because the proposed zoning is consistent with the area, the staff recommends that the request be granted with the following stipulations: that the development adhere to the site plan on file, provided that the director may authorize adjustments, that a drainage impact analysis and a traffic impact analysis will be required unless appropriate waivers are granted by the Division of Engineering, that all exterior lighting must be oriented inward toward the development, that screening must be provided in accordance with Section twenty-six fifty of the Parish Code, and that there be no outside storage.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. We do not have any opposition to Item fourteen. If the applicant would like to speak or add to the staff's presentation, may come to the podium at this time. Mr. John Gilmore? Pat Diamond? Would you like to speak? Okay, so, and Mr. Horn, Sudd Horn? You wouldn't like to speak? Okay. All right, we have no opposition. Any questions or comments by the board? Okay? Seeing no opposition, all in favor state aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item fourteen passes. Item fifteen, take appropriate action on case RJ zero four dash zero two three dash one seven, a request by Alan Seal to rezone from manufactured home park to recreational vehicle park to allow recreational vehicle park, six spaces for recreational vehicles, and five spaces for manufactured home at thirty-three thirty Westwood Road in Ward Four. I will entertain a motion for approval with the stipulations.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Cobb and a second by Mr. Link. Ms. Wallace.
This property is located in the Westlake area and encompasses just under one acre of land. The existing park at this location has been in place for so long that our office does not have concrete records on original approvals. Excuse me. Our twenty-fourteen aerial photography indicates that there were six manufactured homes and one RV on site at that time, and this date is relevant because that is when the code was amended to require that new RV spaces be located within RVP zoning. Because the petitioner has increased the number of RVs in the park, the land must be rezoned to bring the park into compliance. Because minimal impacts are to be expected, the staff recommends that the request be granted with the- granted with the following stipulations, that the development adhere to the site plan on file, that all exterior lighting must be oriented inward, that RV park model types are prohibited, that screening must be provided in accordance with section twenty-six fifty of the Parish Code, that a drainage impact analysis will be required unless appropriate waiver is granted by the Division of Engineering, and that permitting is subject to approval of the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development. And I want to go back to one that I missed. On the screening, we do want to ask that that be installed prior to final electrical inspection.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. We do not have any opposition to item fifteen. If the applicant is present and you would like to speak on your behalf, you may come to the podium, okay? Any questions or comments by the board? Seeing no opposition, all in favor state aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item fifteen passes. Item sixteen, take appropriate action on case RJ zero four dash zero two four dash one seven, a request by Jerry Gibson to rezone from manufactured home park to recreational vehicle park to allow a recreational vehicle park, forty-three spaces at fifty-one oh six Highway twenty-seven South in Ward Four. I will entertain a motion for approval with the stipulations.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Cobb and a second by Mr. Link. Ms. Wallace.
This property is located in Carless and encompasses nearly three acres. The park located at this site has been operating since before adoption of comprehensive zoning in nineteen eighty-two. When the current owners purchased the park in nineteen eighty-five, the park was approved for twenty RVs on the north side of the property and twenty-six manufactured homes on the south side. At this time, they would like to rezone the south side to make the park entirely recreational vehicles with forty-three spaces on this portion of land. If approved, the entire development will be served by a new community sewer system, and the north and south property lines will be fenced with six-foot wooden fencing. Because there are similar developments in the area, the staff recommends that their request be granted with the following stipulations, that the development adhere to the site plan on file, provided that the director may authorize adjustments, that all exterior lighting must be oriented inward, that RV park model types are prohibited, that screening must be provided in accordance with section twenty-six fifty of the Parish Code, that a drainage impact analysis will be required unless appropriate waiver is granted by Engineering, and that permitting is subject to approval of the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. We do not have any opposition to this item, item sixteen. If the applicant is present and you would like to speak, add to the staff's, okay? Any questions or comments by the board? Seeing no opposition, all in favor state aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item sixteen passes. Item seventeen, take appropriate action on case RA zero four dash zero zero one dash one seven, a request by Sassol Chemicals LLC to abandon and revoke the original dedication of the VCM Plant Road, Michigan Avenue, Electric Drive, First Avenue, Third Avenue, Fourth Avenue, Fifth Avenue, Sixth Avenue, and Seventh Avenue in Bel Air subdivision, Lincoln Heights Number One subdivision, and Lincoln Heights Number Two subdivision in Ward Four. I will entertain a motion for approval with the stipulations.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Navar.
Second.
And a second by Ms. Cobb. Ms. Wallace.
These roads are located in the Mossville area. In twenty-fourteen, the board and the police jury rezoned the surrounding land to heavy industrial and abandoned a number of roads to facilitate the Sassol construction projects. Where individually owned properties remained, only portions of roads were abandoned to maintain access to the various tracts of land. Since then, Sassol has successfully acquired all but one tract of land. As the project has progressed, it has become apparent that Sassol's construction is to a point where it is best to abandon the remaining roads and allow limited access for utility providers, adjacent plants, and the lone individually owned property. Sassol has submitted to us access plans for all these entities, and the plans are attached on your tablet for your review. Because these roads are located within the industrial complex, the staff recommends that their request be granted with the stipulation that the petitioner must provide access to utility providers, the owners of Lot Twelve, Block Thirteen of Bel Air subdivision, and the adjacent industrial facility as per the submitted exhibits.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. Do I have any opposition to item seventeen, but if the applicant would like to add anything? Any questions or comments by the board? Again, seeing no opposition, all in favor state aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item seventeen passes. Item eighteen, advise that the police jury took the following action on March twenty-third, two thousand seventeen, with reference to the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Board from the March twenty-first, two thousand seventeen meeting. The applicant Seal at Woodall Lane, this board passed, and the police jury upheld. Applicant Eco Enterprises at North Perkins Ferry Road, this board denied, and the police jury upheld. PWK Timberland at Manchester Road, this board passed, and the police jury upheld. Applicant Stelly at McCowen Road, this board passed, and the police jury upheld. Applicant Satig at West Dave Dugos Road was withdrawn. The applicant Delaney at Farm Road, this board passed, and the police jury upheld. Applicant Woodlake Park at West Fourth Street, this board passed, and the police jury upheld. I would like to advise that the next regularly scheduled planning and zoning meeting will be held on Tuesday, May sixteenth, two thousand seventeen, in the police jury meeting room. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Got a motion by Ms. Cobb, need a second. Second by Mr. Link. We are adjourned.